I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Is there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No sir.
For legislative improvements, for last public business meetings?
Some do.
Second? This is easy. We have an encore for a here award just because Leroy Sessna and staff of Allegheny College of Maryland, we have some Allegheny college employees come to the fire department, Allegheny County Emergency Services, Special Operations Team, Bedford Fire Department, and Shaq Call is your fire company is all represented in here tonight. Coming in, you stacked in at work.
Well, we're gonna do, we're gonna do multiple pictures. We're gonna do a big, big group. And if you'll, if you'll stand sideways sort of toward the middle so I can get everyone in the group please. Make sure I can see the.
Just didn't really move together, you got a problem?
Leroy, don't push him, he's standing sideways, you can play it on, play it the same.
Thank you. And I think after the presentation, we'll do the Allegheny College of Maryland group together and all of the fire department group together, two separate shots. Thank you.
What do you have in mind? If you want to keep individual individuals together. They're all, they're all the same, so you can help me. Where's Mr. Sessna? Congratulations. This is recent Board of County Commissioners, highly commissioned Mr. Leroy A. Sessna, trench in Cayman Accident Rescue, Allegheny College of Maryland, September 7th, 2016, utilizing your head and in your heart demonstrated competency, common sense in action. Thank you, congratulations. That sign, Free Brody Bill Valentine, J. H. A. We also have one here from the company's fire department. Allegheny County EMS. Allegheny County Special Operations. Bedford Fire Department. And Shaq Call is your fire department.
Now, if I could please have all of the fire groups, special operations, et cetera, together. And then if we could have Dr. John Bear, Mr. Dewitt, and Mr. Jones come up for a second photo. Here, together. Thank you so much, congratulations. Thanks. Congratulations again. Thank you.
I also think while we're rolling back our seats, it's important to recognize that a lot of these guys from the fire departments hold double duty, triple duty, even though they had me kind of confused who was on the special office and who's with Shaq and who's with the city of Cumberland because all of them work together and all of them, Jeff, I know you're on special office and Shaq, and I know Roger was invited to half a dozen different other things, and Darren's been in Shaq and worked for the city, so thank you guys because I know it doesn't matter whose department is who when the time calls you, all work together. I think that's very important. Thank you.
Absolutely, Commissioner Brody. And I wanted to take an opportunity for the public that's here as well as for the commissioners, but just a brief synopsis of the event and recognizing. This event occurred September 7th, 2016 at 2:15 in the afternoon. It was at Allegheny College and there was work being done on the utility line that required the opening of a trench. As a result of that opening of the trench, which had worked within that trench, there was a subsequent collapse of the trench. One of the things that frequently that we learn in emergency services, there are specific events that are low frequency which occur very infrequently or very high risk, which means that carries substantial amount of danger, but to the individuals involved into the first responders and trench rescue is one of those events. It was the quick work of the gentleman from Allegheny College, Mr. Sessna, Mr. McBride, who no doubt saved lives that day by their quick effort in uncovering those individuals, recognizing the fact that there were two individuals in the trench, one of them was completely covered. So it was a quick work of those employees to save those lives as well as the combined efforts of the county's special operations team and the fire departments that assisted. One of the things to recognize is that although the county operates a special operations team, that team consists, as Commissioner Brody has said, that team consists of components of not only the technical expertise that we have with special operations, but reaching out to specific fire departments to be able to assist with those technical rescues. In this particular case, Bedford Road and Shaq Fire Department. And I would be remiss if I didn't provide an opportunity for City Fire Department, who's their first duty response area. We have the incident commander from that particular date present, Battalion Chief Winter, if you care, have a few words.
I'd just like to say thank you to the, to the people that helped us out and that can send scene. It's always traumatic when you go out for a call like that, not knowing where you're gonna arrive, a proud one, and it's pretty crucial. Starts with 911 and dispatch, their information, what they provide for us, give us the assistance we need. But thank you for the recognition, thank you to 911 Center and all the special ops teams that come out and assist us that day. Especially the guys at the college, they did a great job, should be commended for that. Thank you very much for the recognition.
Just for additional information, the individual that were rescued subsequently went to the local facility for treatment and were sent out of the area for additional care. At this point, commissioners, if you would just indulge me for just a second, I do want to recognize one other individual that's in the room for a particular accomplishment, that would be Melanie Seamer. Melanie just recently completed the full Marine Corps Medal on the 62 miles, correct?
Yes.
And we're proud to have her as one of our 911 dispatches for the county. I do also want to offer an attention to the public that this coming Saturday, of course, we'll be setting the clocks back for fall, we encourage everyone, when we set those clocks back, that we check smoke detectors, check the batteries, if maybe we replace those items, now in the state of Maryland, we're replacing those detectors with sealed units that have a near battery life on them, but it still does not mean they don't need to be tested. And important, or to accompany that, Saturday at 2 o'clock, we are going to be using our reverse 911 system as a test. We're going to test that notification system, the home phones, cell phones, text messages, whatever the case may be, and we're going to deliver that same message via our automated system out to the general public. And we want to make sure the residents understand that if they fail to receive that message, it means you're not in our system. You can go to the county's webpage and be able to enter yourself into our next door learning system to be able to receive those alerts. But this coming Saturday, approximately 2 PM is when we're going to do that testing system. Thank you.
I number two, we have a subject who achieved an excellence, Mr. Jason, Finance Department.
Yes, first of all, thanks to you guys for recognizing the finance office, we're getting the GFOA's initiative achievement for the 21st year. Big accomplishment and one of the, you know, I'm saying here, I did a really good work against Pam Diaz and all of those, Land Share Group. It's, many of you know, this giant document is part of our audit every year to prepare, it's above and beyond what we need to do with the audit. The goal behind the GFOA's program for this is transparency for taxpayers, additional information that you can save for the taxpayers. So we're just happy we're able to continue receiving this support from the GFOA. We're in about the 29th percentile for counties of our size, so about 29% of our size counties receive this support. So pretty happy we're continuing to get it, we continue to work, I think, year 25. I also be remiss if I didn't thank Jerry France and Jay George, they started this in 2009 or 2012. So we're just happy to carry their work. So we appreciate your support as we do this and appreciate all our staff's support in the finance, or support in the finance office. It's a lot of work, appreciate your help.
Great, we appreciate it, Jason, and our finance department, so.
I just want to ask you a couple of questions.
Sure.
Congratulations first of all, Jason, and thank you to the rest of the staff. Now, when you think back, when you was chief accountant at Allegheny County, and we was getting this award, our general budget was around what size?
Just for the general fund, we were in the 90 million and seven.
And it, now if you think back 10 years ago, how many people was in your finance office?
Well, we had twice the people we had now.
So I think that's something people really need to look at, which is, you're running a pretty big department, it showed, we recognize that, but I know it's a lot more work than it was 10 years ago if you're doing it with half the staff.
Correct, correct. As many are, and we're happy to do it, continue to do it. Yeah, it is a good step.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Item number three, we have a more local issue. Adam Patterson is going to give an update on the Mount 7 Bridge.
Gentlemen, thank you. So I'm gonna take the opportunity tonight, just to take folks on the county branch here in town, one of them, Cobblestone Bridge, and also talk about a future State Highway Bridge project on 36. So Cobblestone Bridge originally was constructed in 1940 and partially rebuilt in 1978. The county has maintained it since 1978. The existing superstructure continues to deteriorate over time and as of last October, about a year ago, we had to reduce the weight carrying capacity to the bridge to about 6,000 pounds due to the section lost in the strength. At that time, the bridge was rated critical and now, now we currently inspect the bridge on a six month frequency. Even at 6,000 pounds, you're going to, I mean, household traffic is still fine on the bridge. When, when we look at, in public works, when we look at different bridge projects that we're going to take on or request to make improvements to, one of the first things that we do is look at, you know, like how close is the nearest detour route? So we evaluate a bridge and see how it impacts local traffic. And so with this bridge, we look at, there's, there's a bridge right here within a couple hundred feet of Cobblestone Bridge, and then of course, there's where Iron Rail ties back into 36 on the lower part of town, there's another way out. So we look at it very closely with regard to all the other bridges and see how the detour route is impacted. And then in this particular situation, the way Cobblestone intersects Maryland 36, the intersection is substandard and it is, in my opinion, is unsafe. So that's, that's something that I also looked at with regard to this bridge. And then after we start finishing looking at just bridge projects, then we look at what else is the county involved in. How, how does this impact other projects beyond just bridge projects in the county? And there's no shortage of work to do here. So the existing bridge is about 57 feet long, it's 15 foot wide. We got five evenly spaced beams, there are large beams, they're about 27 inches in depth. You know, both, both the bridge deck in the substructure are in fair condition. This bridge is under our federal bridge program, so that, and it meets federal bridge criteria due to the length, it exceeds 20 feet in length. So it's under State Highway authority as far as making sure that we're inspecting it and following through with the recommendations that the inspections are finding, and we have done so. So what I have estimated, if in fact we were to do a bridge replacement project for this bridge, price tag would be in excess of a million dollars. So the reason really we haven't made any improvements to it or made recommendations for replacement is two things, close proximity to our detour route, and the intersection at, at 36, the substandard intersection at 36. State Highway claims to replace the bridge on 36 in 2018. They approached the county in June of 2015 and requested that we consider detouring 36 traffic onto Iron Rail Street. We investigated that request and we considered it. Unfortunately, Iron Rail as it currently exists cannot accommodate 36 traffic for a temporary detour. We've made them aware of that. The latest information that I have with Maryland State Highway is I'd recommend that we improve Iron Rail Street and we widen Iron Rail Street and so that for a period of four to six months, traffic on 36 can safely be put on Iron Rail Street. Just last week, I met with State Highway again to check the status of this. We're working on, State Highway is working on, I know you heard that they would work with Allegheny County on trying to improve Iron Rail Street, perhaps ahead of the Maryland 36 bridge project that is planned in 2018. In that, we would be, we have to relocate facilities, I've already met with Tom Gettys and I've also met with CSX to get Jason properly in, they're aware of the future project. So things are in the works on being able to make improvements to Iron Rail Street. We had an opportunity when we finished the water and sewer project, I made, I made drainage improvements at that time and we resurfaced the whole road. It's a much better road than what it was. So I'd like to continue to be able to work upon that and build upon and make improvements on Iron Rail Street ahead of Maryland 36 Bridge Project. So those are the updates we have seen on both Cobblestone Bridge and also on Maryland State Highway Bridge Project. Any questions?
Is there any way you can help with Cobblestone, short of replacement, having people in service?
The beams, the beams are deteriorating to the point where you can see them. So being able to take anything and use channel iron, channel steel on each side, you're essentially have company, the welding. The substructure isn't in good condition, so new beams, I would not recommend putting new beams on the existing substructure as it is. Again, 6,000 pounds giving only traffic, cars, trucks, vehicles.
Thank you.
Item number four is a public hearing, it could have been the bill 6-16, this is our Emergency Medical Services Dedicated Facility Road Improvement, Water Project, On Authorization, this is our public hearing.
Hello again. So two weeks ago, we introduced this bond bill, it's a $9 million bond bill, includes projects, not listed for never mind, $5 million for a 700 megahertz EMS communication system, $1.1 million for the Allegheny College Act building, $1 million for the landslide in Western Maryland City Railroad and Trail, $680,000 for bridge projects, $300,000 for going green stormwater drainage improvements, $250,000 for a back truck for our emergency department, $250,000 for detours on closing costs, $235,000 for Bel Air Elementary Route, and $185,000 for our public safety bill. So tonight, they simply have a hearing for this, it was introduced last week, a hearing tonight, accept any comment, we'll review the public. There's no comment, we can, if anyone wants to sue, it's November 17th, and if you do that, it will become effective after the 45 day referendum period, January 1, 2017. And if that's the case, then we'll borrow, assume their act, we actually do borrow, so analyzing what kind of term we take out of this, between 10 to 20 years, and interest rates are still holding pretty good for us, so we want to have a 12-year term. So, it's a comment now.
Jason, can you talk about how this influences our debt payments and debt service?
So we presented this back in May, and actually last, past two budget seasons, we presented this borrow and most of these projects. When we do this borrowing, it'll actually fit right in our debt, if we're building one, it'll keep us right around $3 million in debt service. So that's kind of why we find it this way, we'll have new debt services this year, 2018, which fits right in with our plans. So keeps us right wherever we're at, doesn't, doesn't require me to come back to you guys next budget season and look for more money to debt service, which will be essentially black. So it fits well in our plans.
And the bond for this is for emergency radio systems?
That's correct.
Now, did you want to give a little update on that?
Commissioners, the five million that was just talked about, we go toward purchasing portable and mobile radios to put our public safety personnel, everyone to the state-supported 700 megahertz system. Understanding fully that the state now assumes the cost of maintaining the backbone, including all the power operations and things that normally would have fallen back to the county number and system, aren't the expense of purchase of portable mobile radios. These radios have a life expectancy of 12 to 15 years, so we're certainly looking at getting some extended life out of them, but the biggest thing that they bring to the table for us is interoperability. Because once we move over to the state system, not only more of our fire and EMS and law enforcement folks be able to communicate within our county, but for the first time in a single radio, we're going to be able to communicate with Mineral County, Bedford County, Somerset County, Erie County, Washington County, all out of a single radio system. So it would be a huge plus for us. Should also recognize the fact that we got pushed into this a little sooner than what we were expecting, as a result of purchase and closure of a company that provides components for existing radio systems. So with that, with the lack of technical support that we're going to lose, this was a good time for us to make the move on this.
Thank you.
All right. This is a public hearing, so is there any public comment on, on anything that Mr. Ben or Mr. Boyd or Mr. Jason discussed? All right. Thank you, Jason. Moving on to our action agenda, item number five is a, Mr. Reddick, Mr. Reddick.
Thank you. Commissioners, about 20 years ago, Board of County Commissioners, Northern Transit Commissioners, Western Maryland City Railroad, have instituted a new agreement whereby a gift of passenger cars is made to the county, which we in turn lease to the Western Maryland City Railroad. A number of those vehicles are in, are in deteriorating condition and the Board of the Western Maryland City Railroad would like to have formal ownership of these cars that are currently leasing so that they can do, so we declare a surplus so they can trade these vehicles in on two blood vehicles, which are currently owned by the Tennessee Valley Railroad Museum. A blood car is essentially a bus on rails. And what this will allow the City Railroad to do is to run smaller trains throughout the year when times weren't, and they don't have to have the expense of buying the diesel with a steam engine pushing and pulling a car on the rail. So, thank you, Commissioners, I'm asking for your permission to declare a surplus, car number 540, 726, 844, and 846.
Any discussion?
How many cars do we, um, total, over there?
That's a good question.
The number at one time was about 12. And the vehicles in question are no longer used by the City Railroad.
They're not in service at all?
They're not in service at all.
Their motion?
Some do.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Item number six is a real property acquisition for a portion of Cumberland Chase. Mr. Parker?
Yes, good evening, Commissioners. County staff is authorized to engage in formal negotiations for a portion of the Cumberland Chase property at the September 15th, 2016 meeting. And this evening, I'm pleased to report that county staff and Summit Community Bank have reached amicable terms. The negotiated purchase price will be $2,067.67 per acre. The county is currently performing a survey of the desired property, it is estimated that it will total approximately 260 acres. So with that, we're asking for authorization for the President to execute a savings agreement that's kind of a draft form at this point, that we're just that portion of property.
Jeff, can you talk about how we're paying for this, where these funds coming from, revolving?
Yes. The, it's, the proceeds of the funds would be, would be borrowing that money basically, you know, lending the money to ourselves, if you will, via the surplus of our revolving building funds.
I believe that we had a master plan on, portion is around two years ago, three years ago?
Yeah, it was almost three years ago now that we did the, the master plan for this facility. park, park, business park, and a lot of other industrial zone property out through there. And it's, that corridor has been in our comp plans, however, worth the corridor, so it's a, it's a good opportunity.
I agree with that. Well, I'll make the motion between the inner and the disagreeing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Mister, consent agenda, Mr. Ebbert.
Commissioners, we have five items under consent agenda for a possible action. Item seven is a motion to approve a grant of amount of eight thousand dollars for Allagana County Sheriff's Office to use for underage value prevention. Item number eight is a motion to approve a five thousand dollar grant for the Allagana County Sheriff's Office school by saving. Item nine is a motion to authorize the county's Department of Public Works to advertise for this, construct certain modifications to the levy of the Alabamian County industrial park to meet current FEMA recertification standards. Item ten is a motion to approve the acquisition of a new chip spreader for Public Chesapeake Supply Equipment Company in the amount of two hundred and twenty-six thousand, two hundred dollars for the county's roads division. Item eleven is a motion to approve the acquisition of a new cab and chassis for October Automotive Auto in the amount of forty-six thousand, eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars for the county's roads division, bridge crew. Commissioners, send a motion for the union.
Any discussion?
No, doesn't need a new chip spreader very much because our old one's junk.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
I'll second that, all in favor? Aye. Thank you. Mr. Redd?
I have.
Mr. Ebbert?
Thank you, commissioners. As a reminder, general election is next Tuesday, and county office building will be closed that day. I also want to report that in addition to the public business meeting that is on your agenda for Thursday, remember the seventeenth, the Board of County Commissioners will be also hosting a meeting on Wednesday, the sixteenth, in room one hundred and seven hundred and one, Kelly Road, and that will be our annual meeting with the Allagana County delegation to announce.
Thank you.
Mr. Murray? First of all, thanks, Allen, Mount Savage, and Mount Savage Fire Department for having us here tonight. It's a very beautiful place, and we love to come. So, Danny, anytime you want to have us up and have dinner and stuff, we're welcome to come. I really don't have much to say this evening, except this week, we did get another new little business on Red Hill, it's called Coops Bakery, you know, there's no fancy nothing going on, no big ribbing type of ceremony or anything like that, it's just three people opening up a little bakery, they're having fun specials, so I most certainly hope that we, as a community, can welcome them, because I have five, and every day this week, I haven't found Madison or yet, so. It's, it's good to see everyone here, Sheriff, it's good to see you here this evening, wife, Wade, sir, foreley, all, welcome, it's good to see you guys here, Dave.
Yeah, the, the bond bill is, is a lot of money, no one's going to deny that, but I think we've structured it, how, how we're going to be able to pay for it over, over time, and it's really just a long-term plan, you know, there's, there's no way that we can get around some of these spending items, so that's kind of how I feel on that one. And Cumberland Chase is, is a great opportunity for us, you know, for economic development. We need relatively flat spaces that we can sell and then get companies in here quickly instead of having to go through all the bureaucratic red tape that becomes, you have multiple lenders, you've got state highway, and all the regulators involved. Our, our longer-term goal is to be able to, to get companies in there off state highways, so, so we're not dealing with them, and, and at that price, it's, it's a really good, good deal for us, so I'm excited for that one. We do, a couple of people signed up to speak tonight, the first one is Mr. Charles Cople, fifteen, seven hundred, Upper Main Street.
One other mention was the trailer, how many of you seen the fall, not the same early? It's immense. Now, my question, my only question is, my son was in a week, two weeks ago, and I don't know if he's a chemical engineer or not, whatever, lighting engineer or something, but he agreed that there's a possibility that the explosives that they put off to get coal right above that has caused this fall. I spoke to two people in Mount Savage, and they had told me before that they were finally planning getting the effect of the, of the explosion a mile away, and one insists, I talked to the one guy today, and he said he had gone by and noticed that because of the explosion consequently, that's part of the problem. Now, those of you that haven't been there, it's immense, now, if you read the paper, I call the editorial paper, my first nervous that they were growing up on the festivals, and the man in charge of editorial, acting like I was, he was CIA, he didn't want to talk to me around, basically. And, but anyway, it's massive, you really think of leaning backwards from doing it?
I think so, we actually had an engineering firm come in here, because they believe what caused it was the water getting out of the sweat off the shell.
The water problem's not there, it's on down the way.
Well, it's, and as you well know, the water runs subsurface.
Well, my question, have you guys been talking to the Bureau of Mines?
We absolutely have.
What, what's, what we're saying is, no Bureau, what's working?
We luckily have our, our engineers dealing with that, maybe.
Because I, I walk the trail all the time, and it's immense. Matter of fact, the switch eight or nine that you guys had a problem with was nothing, they fixed that in a heartbeat, and my concern is, I got a big friend, John Saylor, who owns the, the shops by the deco, and he's been devastated this year because none of it ran. It, it's, it's discouraging, and I know we need to get it fixed. My question is, is there a possibility it's caused by a dynamite right up the hill, less than half a mile, more than half a mile? Because I didn't see water problem there, I'm an engineer, but I talked with, I guess, those other dozen different people, they all had the same theory that I have, and I'm only getting this because of, it's not, we're borrowing money as a county, and I've got it indirectly paid for, and so I'm just concerned if there's some, some other way that we can get someone that may, may, may be, may have the responsibility, that's what I want to see. And I have one other thing left, though.
All right.
I always, I always wanted to find a question, and I, and I was hoping to find a safe thing, so I, I reached out to Bureau of Mines back in April, and I also had an opportunity at that point, we had a, an engineer come assisting us with assessing the situation, based upon the, the last distances from the hillside, if we move out in five minutes, nine seconds. It just seems sort of odd, I mean, that, the people a mile away are feeling the effects of that, that dynamite going off, and this is less than happening, huh?
I speak to.
Because I walk.
I speak to the Bureau of Mines, yep.
One other thing, I never see, the, the county gives money from rocky gap to the various colleges, and I know that that's a good gesture, but how much money goes to students that graduate and then they're going someplace else? My kid graduated from WBU, you know where is that now? Amherst, they're alive, they'll never be back, but he graduated from WBU, not across the country. I'm not, I'm not saying that disparaging, but I look around town and see how people out there continue paying taxes, and I appreciate the county being conservative and doing what they need to do to try and keep, but is that money all maybe going to students opposed to maybe going into the till and dropping their taxes for the, for the property?
Well, actually, a fair chunk of it does, other than going to AC, Crossbrook State, a large chunk that don't operate the fire departments.
Well, that's great, that, that's one, but, you know, I just think, and then, maybe it's just me, I think many of those kids get a vet, could get a vet, but they're going to be here, and so I don't know.
That's, that's. That's an issue that we deal with every day, I mean, that's, that's, that's part of why I ran for office, to be honest, is, is there's, there's a problem with keeping our young people in there.
Yeah.
And so, and so.
My kid, my kid never been gone.
Right, and, and so, in, in doing the scholarships, is that the best way to do it? I don't know, I, I, that's what we've done the past couple of years, maybe we can change that one forward, but, but I, I think the bigger focus is, how do we get more businesses in here? Stuff like Cumberland Chase is a good step, and some other taxing center we've, we've done, but on the property tax side, we're at the lowest rate we've been since nineteen ninety-one, so, I'm, I'm, we're going what we can with, with a very limited budget. So, I, I think the total rocky gap is, is about one point two million a year, and, and of that, I, I guess.
Four hundred and sixty thousand, one to ACN, and also Crossbrook State, right? The largest chunk here is to twenty, twenty-some odd fire risk.
Let's do it, let's, let's do it, because they need it. But that was my, I, I enforce and say it, I was present behalf of you, you know, and I couldn't get any done either.
Right.
That's, that's a shame, thank you.
Thank you. We also have Mr. Danny Levese sign up.
Thank you, gentlemen, thank you for coming tonight. I listened to Mr. Patterson here talking about the bridge. When the people came in and inspected it the first time, and I spoke with our folks in Public Works, he was gracious, he sent me pictures of the superstructure underneath. And where the superstructure is bad, is where the web of it actually sets on the bulkhead on both sides. I was questioned, talked to some folks about it, and one of the answers I was given, why would the county put that much money in a place like Mount Savage? Well, damn it, we live here. We use that bridge. At one point, that bridge was Main Street from Mount Savage. Yes, the intersection on thirty-six, you got to be careful of it, it's not a above-standard intersection, that, that the people who live here and drive it and use it have been doing it since they were doing with horses and buggies, and they all know where it's at. I spoke with a project engineer from Bill, and had him say, what can we do with this? Could you fix it? And his answer to me was, yes, where it sets on the bulkhead, could be plated. And that would give you the web back that sets on the bulkhead. Our major concern, what we tear out of this bridge over here by the old gas station, Iron Rail Street's going to become the main drag figure. If something happens on Iron Rail Street, and that bridge right up there is out of the service, you've got eight hundred and eighty-some kids in the school up on top of that hill. That bridge is out of service, you can't get an ambulance, a fire truck, or nothing into this town to go any further than where we are right now, because that main road bridge is going to be out of service. This bridge down here, yes, it's got the inspectors name, they were here again, I think, buddy told me yesterday?
About two weeks ago.
Okay, they were here two weeks ago, and they looked over again, said there's loads inspected every six months. They're right across the street, you have a fire, you have an ambulance car with whatever, instead of going here around the corner or across the bridge, you're a mile and a half around to get to it. That works into the Golden Mall with an ambulance stop. You can't get through this town, should anything at all happen on Iron Rail Street. There's no way to get a Sunday up or to get out. The project engineer from Bill says he can't be fixed, he's five weeks, but there's the rest of the superstructure's there, and you want to meet up and look at it. It's not a little monkey patch community, people are proud of where they live and what they have and what they work for. You're setting forth a, which is painful, because everybody here work together. I rest quite sure that this happened, probably, I'd say over an effort, or down around Bed Lothian or whatever it be, get fixed. These people deserve better than to say, we're not doing nothing for the town of Mount Savage. Granted, you can't put it in bridge yet, you can't spend a million bucks. The folks, the other folks that we spoke to said it can be recovered underneath, once you take serious looks at it. Appreciate your time, thank you.
I hope that one feels that we've memory doored Mount Savage. Well, we just did a pretty large investment, twelve million dollars in the infrastructure of Mount Savage in the last three years, so we're, we're looking in. Thank you.
Immediately following the meeting, we have Sergeant Simples, who's going to do the demonstration with our new K nine, and that would be inside here?
Yes, sir.
All right. Our next public business meeting is November seventeenth, two thousand and sixteen, five o'clock. We also have a meeting with delegation on Wednesday, November sixteenth, at three o'clock, at Kelly Road. Thank you all for coming, have a nice weekend.